Okay, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is. Virginia. I'm gonna get Parker. And you're gonna speak on the development code flood mitigations, what we have here?
Yes.
This is. Oh, I'm.
Am I good? I mean, I'm echoing myself, so I feel good. Okay, so I'm Virginia Parker. I'm the executive director for the San Marcos River Foundation, and so I'm working all over our river corridor. Are you in charge of? Okay. So I just wanted to come and present an idea to you guys that might help with flood mitigation. A strong development code can do a lot of things for Martindale. It can protect the integrity of Martindale, which we all know and love. It can mitigate flood impacts, which we have all been a part of. The flooding, protect water quality in the San Marcos River, which is really important to the River Foundation. Create parks and open space, which Martindale is, you know, slowly doing, which is fantastic. Protect wildlife habitat, which we are losing with every development. Create a natural landscape, build a sense of community, and increase options for alternative modes of travel, because that is becoming more and more popular. And as we know, Highway eighty is not the safest place to be. So that is important. Next slide. Um, so in order to have our strong code mean anything, we have to incentivize developers to want to annex into the city so that they can abide by our code. Utilities like water and wastewater are two of the things that can incentivize developers, and I'm seeing developers beg to be annexed into the city of San Marcos. So we know that this does work. Two opportunities potentially could be, you know, some sort of partnership with Martindale Water Corps. I didn't put water in there, but that's what that is. And then, you know, we have an evaporative tank for wastewater, and we're getting close to needing an expansion on that wastewater plant. And I don't know that TCQ would permit a larger wastewater treatment pond, but maybe they would. But the good news is there are economic impact disaster relief funds that are some form of forgivable percentage, depending on what the Texas Water Development Board decides. And you've got groups like BBRT coming into the area that we could partner with so that the portion that Martindale owned could be forgiven. And that also would allow Martindale to own wastewater in the future, which the future of wastewater is reuse. So it will be a very valuable commodity, which is why groups like DVRT, private corporations are coming to our area. And then also mitigation strategies for flooding can be used as credit. So if you put a constant, a, an impervious cover limit on your development code, they can do things to increase their impervious cover through mitigation practices. Next slide. Let me go back one. So. Goals. That's okay. Okay, so annexation can mean a lot of things to Martindale, increase tax base, which, you know, is important for growth. Financial stability, again, important adherence to the development code, increased benefits to existing residents. Stronger sense of community and protection for the integrity of Martindale. Next slide. So different things that we can do to mitigate future flood impact, because we know we're having stronger storm events. Floods will increase in velocity. The density of the development is really important, because with density comes green space in the rest of the property. And so that green space is really important for infiltration of floodwaters. Reduction of current impervious cover limits, and I'm about to put the current impervious cover limits up based on our discussion previously. Protection of water quality is a goal of flood mitigation and reduction of rainwater runoff. And then infiltration practices that we can incentivize developers to use permeable pavers, cisterns, and rainwater collection systems, riparian protection, rain gardens or bio retention ponds, and native grasses, weeds, and trees, because we know that they will more likely survive during times of drought, which we are experiencing right now. So these are the current Martindale impervious cover limits. You can see that there is no standard or limit on mixed use. That is quite scary to someone who is concerned about flooding and water quality of the San Marcos River. Heavy commercial is seventy-five percent, industrials eighty percent. Really, what I'm hearing in my meetings talking about flood risk and water quality, anything above twenty percent is a problem. And we don't have anything near twenty percent on there. So I really want you all to be very aware of what Martindale currently requires for impervious cover. This is the fastest way for us to mitigate flooding. Changing these numbers. Next slide. So goals that we could have, and I say we, I'm the meeting DJ. For Martindale. Twenty percent impervious cover limit is a great goal to have. Maximum thirty-five percent if they could mitigate for that extra fifteen percent through practices like rainwater collection and, you know, pervious pavers and things like that. We should not be allowing RVs in the floodplain.
When you say floodplain, hundred year, five hundred year.
So I say floodplain, meaning FEMA's current floodplain. Something to note, this is really important and shocking, is that FEMA is not value the floodplain with potential rain events. They only go off of historic events. So if Wimberley gets twenty inches next time, there will be a higher flood, but FEMA can't guess on that. They can only legally look at what has historically happened. And so when you're looking at FEMA guidelines, just know that most likely it will go up someday with a bigger rain event. So with these things in the floodplain, and that includes the floodway, the floodway is the much higher velocity, as we know, we've all seen it. Breakaway structures in the floodway and floodplain should not be allowed. When a developer comes in, 2D modeling really should be required. An engineer's report really isn't going to show us what we need to see. And then, again, we need that infiltration of floodwaters. And when we clear the riparian zone of all the grass, all the trees down to the river's edge, not only is that flood getting to the river faster, but it's not able to soak into the ground. And again, the water quality just goes way down in those events. Next slide. So we know there are a lot of developments coming to our area. Most of these are planned. Most of these, you know, some of them are in San Marcos, some of them are in San Marcos, CTJ. That doesn't mean they're not going to affect Martindale. The Walton Group is, you know, coming, to my understanding, we have a development agreement with them, but if they were to sell and change use or whatever, that development agreement would need to be redone. So it would be important to have the right codes that y'all want today for that purpose. Next slide. So examples of impervious cover limits that have worked. Hays County just came out with a conservation development guideline. It's an incentive plan. It's not a mandate. And it's twenty percent, and they make permitting for these projects easier. That's the incentive for the developers. Highland Lakes is who they base their conservation development guideline after, and now eighty-five percent of new developers abide by the twenty percent impervious cover rule in Highland Lakes, because honestly, that's what people want now. They want their thinking environmentally. They don't need a biggest, the biggest house on the block. They want the green space. So these things do work. Sunset Valley's down to eighteen percent. Next slide. So you can see a visual here of what does a conservation development look like. Again, way more green space on the right side compared to the left. The left is your typical nineteen-sixties, nineteen-seventies development, but really, the pendulum is swinging to the right. Next slide. In Hays County, with that conservation development plan, they looked at where the growth is coming in that area. And I know we are not in Hays County. We are in Caldwell, but Caldwell and Guadalupe are going to have the same issues that Hays is having. So in the next thirty years, they're anticipating up to three hundred, you know, up a little bit less than three hundred percent increase in population, which is, is, is a lot. Next slide. So they've got nine conservation goals. You've got the packets, so you can read these later, but a lot of these things are very important to the Martindale residents. So I would encourage you to look at what incentivized Hays County to put forth this plan. Next slide. They looked at three levels of conservation development, and the strictest one is on the right. It maximizes conserved land. You know, they're looking at density and diversity with the minimum land disturbance possible. That's a really great thing, especially this close to the river. Next slide. So they looked at two real world examples, and they went through and put the different types of development in those pieces of property, and they analyzed the lot yields, meaning the number of homes, the percentage of conserved land, the total infrastructure cost, and the cost for a lot. And you can see conservation subdivision one and two didn't cost, I guess one was just a tad bit more than your conventional subdivision, but the conserved land was quite a bit higher. So the total infrastructure cost was two million more than your conventional on conservation subdivision one, but it was actually way less, meaning a lot less than in conservation subdivision two. So that just shows you what these projects are doing for the financial piece as well. So that's the Michaelis tract, and then the second tract was the Con Woods. And you can see both of the more sensitive developments cost less than the total infrastructure construction cost than the original conventional subdivision. And then the per lot, both of those were also less than your typical. But you can see that the conserved lands went way up, and that's really where we need to be thinking. Next slide. So is it going to work? Yes. If you guys think about this kind of development in our area, it will definitely, it's definitely feasible, and this is work all across the nation. And Martindale's such a cool little town. It would be neat for us to be one of the leaders in Caldwell County. Next slide. So everyone benefits. Homeowners, the developers, and then the communities where people live. So I would highly encourage y'all to look through the Hays County plan. And if you want other examples, I can give them to you, but first and foremost, I think that our impervious cover needs to change pretty quickly. That's it. Here's my contact info. Do you have any questions?
Can you go back to slide?
What's on that slide?
The, the one which shows the, the two differences as far as the conservation development and impervious cover. It's a graph. What's this like? Yes. Okay, and you were saying like, is twenty percent impervious cover?
Is the goal.
Is the goal on the right?
Correct.
On the right here, that's twenty percent impervious.
I mean, I haven't mapped out that graph, but this is from the Hays County plan, and that's their goal, is twenty percent. Well, the green is not developed.
So, okay.
So it's only. Yeah, only right there. Correct. So impervious cover means roofs, sidewalks, pavement, anything where a raindrop hits, it's not going to soak into the ground. So that mowed area is considered green space, but it's actually pervious. So the rainwater can get directly into the soil. And on your left.
So running off the roof.
Immediately. Right. Right. And you can put infiltration tanks, rain gardens, all sorts of good things to slow the water down from going to the next tract downhill. So you can actually catch that rainwater.
Is this a plan that's in place now?
And they just put it out. I think they put it out and the county commissioners voted on it, but we'd have to check that to be sure. It's an incentive. It's an incentive.
And that's in Hays County?
Yep. For, for anything not in a municipality. And they're hoping to work with municipalities to fortify, because, you know, Hays County can only incentivize so much. But if the city's backed that and, you know, double down for these developers, it's going to have a lot more teeth.
Right.
Are they, is the conservation plan commercially viable? I don't know, is there a market for people who want to live in that high density communities?
Yes. You think about people and what they're valuing these days, especially post-COVID. They're buying smaller homes just to get next to the green belt. I mean, there's a reason that East Austin has taken off. They want walkable. They want amenities, and they want nature. And we have all of that right now. But if we build like we could on the left, this whole area will change, and the reason people move here will be very different. But if we can conserve our green space and the nature of the area, you know, that's, that's why I moved to Martindale.
Are there financial incentives that are provided in terms of like other tax incentives or like financial incentives, or is it merely process related?
So here's the difference. So in the county, there are incentives for getting the plan through quicker. So it makes permitting a lot faster. But the difference between the county and the city, like Martindale, is that you guys can mandate this stuff. So when people come in, they need to abide by your development code, whereas counties cannot do that. So y'all have more power in Hays County. And so I would urge you to use that.
Is San Marcos incentivizing anything?
So San Marcos has a pretty great development code. I do not think it's this strict, and so they're my next target audience. So.
Quick question. What about property taxes, would there be an incentive for the, for conduct, condensed development? Since you have less land, your property taxes should be lower.
It's up to y'all.
No, it's up, it's up to the county. I'm just saying.
Well, if they annex into.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, say Hays County, for example. If you got a lot smaller lot size.
Well, that is the house worth less since it's through a green belt.
I'm just saying, I mean, that, that could be an incentive for somebody to say, hey.
Technically, yes, but typically, when homes are next to green belts, they're actually worth a lot more.
And I guess the developer. That property, that green space is the body.
Absolutely. Every property is different. So in my mind, this is a typical. Yeah. Just like every development that's ever been. Cherryville's not going to own every home in that property. They're going to sell house by house by house, whoever ends up developing that property, assuming it's not a solar field. But, you know, we just don't know what's going to happen over there. So. It's, it's going to be, the, the tax burden will be the onus of the homeowner, right? Or the commercial operator, or whoever owns the property at that point. But in the city, you guys can mandate this stuff, whereas, you know. Yeah. And where it is, like, should things be built in the floodplain?
Right.
These are things we need to ask.
Well, some things can be built in the floodplain, I mean, in floodplains, they just have to be on stilts.
Right. But, right. Yeah, but if it's in the city limits, and it's a cash offer, they actually, if they're not going to get, you know, the flood insurance, they actually don't even have to be on the stilts. So that would be up to city code, if you guys wanted to allow that or not.
We, we, we do have.
Some codes.
If they're, if they're building a new house, they have to have a professional engineer assessment, and has to meet certain elevation, but those could be improved upon in the future.
After you visited, last time I went to Blue Hole, and I was so impressed. And it's amazing the materials that can be used. Yeah.
For allowing that, that rainwater to get to the ground.
To, yeah. They had some things that looked like bricks they walked on that were. Yeah, it was. They soaked up the water.
So they're pervious. They're spongy.
Yeah. Yeah. So it was pretty.
Yep.
Heat and all the walking trails and everything. That's pretty awesome.
That's cool. Thanks, you guys. Y'all can contact me.
Thank you.
So now we have Katie from the cafe to talk about the Fourth of July celebration. So I just have, I don't have my PowerPoint presentation, because we're kind of, I guess, more so introducing a concept and a conversation. And we have a small committee to talk about the Fourth of July celebration in Martindale. And this year, we wanted to bring more than just a parade, but kind of a weekend getaway, small-town America celebration that involves everyone, community, the city, and just different ways for us all to get together and have an event. So right now, we've been talking about, and when I say we've, I've, we have five or four businesses in downtown Martindale. We've all gotten together and just kind of talked about some ideas, and just some timing. We wanted to talk today to you guys, so if you're approaching this quickly. But we were starting July, or June thirtieth with a free community event with a movie, teaming up with the library and for permitting to do a movie in the lawn on June thirtieth, on July first, being a Friday, just a band like we normally do at the cafe. But then Saturday, Sunday, Monday being a lot heavier. And that Saturday being potentially closing the street and doing a carnival. That could be a big community involvement, games for kids, games for adults. We talked about having a dunking booth that we thought would be really fun if there was elected members from maybe the city council or from the community that we can, you know, get involved in, get to meet everyone and talk with everyone. A larger band that night on Saturday, July fourth, or sorry, Saturday, July second. And the third falling on a Sunday, doing a market and also closing the street and having market, and we talked about a band as well, doing two-step lessons and dancing in the street and for, you know, just to find two-step in the street of Martindale, because it's, we're still a small town. And then July fourth being the actual parade, and that falling the normal ten AM start time, and we're still, we're kind of looking both for city help and leadership on the plans of the route of the parade. We have a proposed that we're looking at, but just information from last year. I personally haven't planned a parade before, so I think that any people that have done it in the past, then I think it's really nice that we all can kind of team up and do this event together as a community. And so that's what we're working on. We're actually meeting tomorrow at five-thirty at the cafe. Anybody who was interested in being involved or planning anything about Fourth of July weekend that we're all getting together. So like I said, I just kind of wanted to present what we were working on to y'all before we run out of time. And have a representative here also for the next meeting that we can finalize plans and budgets as well. Because, for instance, closing the street down for ideally the three days, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and maybe not the full day, but at least for those high-traffic times, just for safety measures for people coming into town and cars driving through downtown. But budget on that, as well as larger bands to come out and bring more people and tourism through Martindale. So we have the larger bands, not budgets, bring them as well as carnival games. I was looking online, just a dunking booth alone is four hundred dollars for four hours, so.
Oh, what is that?
The dunking booth is, yeah. And so, you know, that's something that we can talk to. There's other community members that want to sponsor these different activations and games, and just to bring us all together, and that, there's room for that, but this is just a conversation to open up and start, and we'll have a little bit more finalized details in the next week.
I've been talking about this for years. Get on YouTube, go to U-Ray Colorado. Every July fourth, they shut down downtown, and the firefighters come out with fire hose fights.
I'm so in.
And they, and just kidding, it's, it's hilarious. It's awesome. And they come in and they get their fire hoses, and they, they blast each other, and they have headgear and all that. Just YouTube, I think that would be great.
We also talked about a hot dog eating contest on the second, too.
We gotta make sure Martindale supplies, Martin water supply gives us free water.
There we go. Yeah. Yes, yes.
Catherine and I want to go to our meeting tomorrow, and we'll kind of give you some options and stuff.
Yeah. Okay, beautiful. Yeah. There's a couple routes that we're looking at that it's kind of similar to what y'all had last year. Yes, and we kind of, there's a couple tweaks of some members that were in the parade that just kind of needed a little. And we also talked with, we planned it in the last, for twenty nineteen, or it was twenty eighteen, and got some ideas from them, and just kind of gathering all that, make this event a very community, everyone involvement, something that we can all do together, so.
I had a question. Yes, so with the bathroom facilities.
Yes. So that was one of the things that's on the budget. I know that in the past, there is, with the parade, there was, the city had, I can't remember the exact department, or not department, but company that provided the quarter parties.
The same company that uses, that provides our solid services also.
That was it. Yes, that does the trash and the, I was going to recommend that maybe we put in a little extra as a quarter party is normally good for a day. And if we're doing a three-day-long celebration downtown, those bathrooms are going to be pretty bad, especially in heat by, you know, after mid-afternoon of the first day. The AC electric, they're kind of a trailer porta john situation. They're, they're used in lockar right now. I think the city actually put one in a nature park downtown and that is there twenty-four seven, but it's, they can last, they actually go through tanks and RV wood, and somebody can go in and wipe them down and clean them up, and it's packed up. So that was part of the budget that I was presenting out.
And then I remember when David Beck played in the street, and the street was closed. Do, do you recall how the traffic was diverted? Was it like turning and going up cross and then coming around?
For the street blocking on the days that are not the parade, because obviously the parade, we need to close all of Main Street. I think the street blocking for Saturday, Sunday can be just, we did, I think, I believe it was. We closed it, it was right after Martindale Street enclosed, and then at the. At the, so Martin, or Martindale begins off the street to shut down there, so they can turn down Martindale and go back behind on Crockett if needed to. Down to Austin and Crockett if needed to divert and turn around. And that was what I was gonna propose in the event permitting was that same route that we did when we did the feedback. Was to close that exact same travel out.
So if you close it off at say Martindale Street, though, you won't have all the parking spaces that you would normally have on Main Street. Do you have some talks, say with Three Rivers Church about parking there?
For, you're speaking of the parade itself or the events. Yes, it would be Three Rivers Church, also the Catholic Church of the street and the event, or the space right next to the post office. And those three are the contacts that we have for past events. And then additional parking to be used at the park, because it's just, I don't like. Sorry for my informality, but having people cross either nineteen seventy-three. I just, I get worried of that traffic without somebody standing there and crosswalking. To keep going that same side of the street on the right-hand side.
And when we contacted Holy Ground Church last year to set up the parade. They were very gracious in allowing us to work there. So that could be another option.
I wanted to ask you the, the weekend that job closed down for David Beck in the road and it was closed. I don't remember seeing an officer on duty the whole time. No.
One, we, we also use.
It wasn't the whole time.
Volunteer firefighters, we have them in as supplemental security onsite and also to be there for EMS. In case of emergency, but as far as an actual police officer, we had one that popped in and out.
But there was one like.
Presented as part of their event from an application site security plan that cover those things. I, I can hold, hold copy.
Oh no, I was just wondering because I thought that, you know, whenever the road was closed, that. The way it was expressed, the way that it was explained is that there is an, an officer that has to be on duty the whole time. That the roads were closed and that's, I'm just going off the conversation we had last time, so if it's changed, I just wanted clarification.
No, there's, there's somebody monitoring.
So it doesn't have to be an officer.
Yes.
Somebody who, somebody who has traffic control. As part of the side, side security plan, it goes through review, our chief of police signs off on those. Especially when there's a security plan. And so, I would defer any future to our new chief of police on how you would prefer to do that. I don't recall what specific personnel they use.
Oh, but for this time, it could be the police, it could be the fire department, it could be. So it's a case by case, police chief.
In some degrees, yes, it depends on what the nature of the event is. If it's general shut down the street, I imagine the chief's gonna have pretty sensitive. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Sounds like fun.
Okay, we are gonna go into our, our report. We have San Marcos River Advisory Board and there is a report in our packet. It was the one that.
Did you have a different one?
Well, mine was much briefer, I was just gonna go straight to the recommendations. So at our last, uh, scheduled meeting, the Martindale River Advisory Committee discussed and agreed to. The following recommendations. One, we recommend the city approve Matthew McGovern as a member of the Martindale City. Number two, there is one last remaining. Disposable container ordinance sign left that one of, two of our members paid for actually. And it's at Malcolm Johnson's house right now. And we request that that sign be installed at the nineteen seventy-nine Phase One Park. Because there's no signage here. And we also request that two to four more signs be ordered as budget allows. In anticipation of losing any signs to floodwaters or vandalism, et cetera. And lastly, with the warmer weather here and with new law enforcement. We want to repeat our previous recommendations that our law enforcement do regular spot checks. At, at least once per weekend at the three public water access points being self-crossing. Elm Bates Park and Phase One Park. And this is not so much to issue tickets, but rather to educate the public about Martindale's relatively recent adoption of a. Disposable container ban than on the river within city limits.
I have, I have the, uh. And do you need more butterstems, the limestone buttersticks for blocking the traffic cars from coming down to the roof?
Nineteen seventy-nine? I don't think so, but that would be a few.
I'll keep my mouth shut. Thank you.
Could you say who's on the board now then?
Yes, Malcolm Johnson, Steve Pondville, Crum Carl, Charlie Olds, myself. Okay, Daniel, and potentially, I think, and we will get, we will dump a number.
Can you have the application sent today and next, uh, the next?
Oh, you already have the application.
Oh, we do, it just needs to be put on the agenda.
Yes, yeah, we have the application. No, not today.
And I requested that a sign, is that something that we also have to fill on the agenda? Or if she gets with you and lets you know what she needs, if it's not gonna exceed the amount, then that way you could go ahead and order it without it being on the agenda.
Correct, yes.
So you could just get with the mayor and just let her know the signs that you want, that way they can order them.
There must be an existing order, some in order.
If you want it the same, same way.
There was two signs made, one that the city ordered and one that our members ordered.
And we ended up having to alter ours to include the ordinance number. So the best, it would be best to move by your previous order.
So is that the can ban signs?
Yes.
And then we need one about the alcohol, right? No alcohol in the parks.
So it's just the can ban signs that you want.
Real quick, on the can ban sign, the original was at the low water bridge and it got washed away. That sign should be up a little higher, probably.
It was at, um, near the water, behind the water company.
It was all right next to the low water bridge.
Yes.
So we should probably move that thing up, up a little higher.
Were we talking about putting it actually behind the water company, they have a chain ring.
Perfect place, little tire there. We don't wanna trash the river. That's right, disposable container, you can't say can ban.
The property at school branch is private property and Lanzilla owns that property. So we don't know yet what they're gonna do, so we have.
Where people park.
Park is private property, so there is a sign up there. And so we don't know, we may have to move that.
Yeah, I, I just wish there would be good stewards and like pick up the trash from their people that visit there. If they really wanted to.
So technically.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, so it looks like Jeff Vladimir has stepped out. He's, so I'll just. I'll just mention that. That Susan Swoon had stepped down at their last parks meeting. And they elected Jeff Vladimir as the chair for the Parks Department.
Was their meeting canceled, the six-thirty meeting?
Okay, so we are now going to recess into executive session. For a couple of items to discuss with our attorney. And we will have about a five-minute break to clear the room. It is seven twenty-two. Are we ready?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, it is five oh six, we're gonna bring this back to order. And our first item of discussion is the chief of police contract.
Don't you have to say what we just did out of an executive session? Oh, that's right, sorry. I thought you had to give a short synopsis, yeah.
It will, we discussed the chief of police contract.
You're right.
And so now. Either have a motion to accept that or just discussion or whatever.
You can do a motion to accept and then if there's discussion, it needs to just amends.
Well, I make a motion that we accept it with the changes that we discussed.
We can't do that and. We need to have a, a motion to accept the contract and then a second, and then that opens discussion. And then amendments can be suggested from there. Or, 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 or you could, you could, you could make a motion that the contract be accepted subject to final determination section in hours.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. Make a motion that we accept the contract according to final. Hours and.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
We, well, we discussed, we discussed the paid hours.
So, so real quick, nothing, nothing that we discussed in executive session is, is, is what we just, just. But blinders on, the purpose of executive session was to. To get legal advice on the parameters of the contract. Now, this is, this is a new separate and distinct conversation and whatever you wanna say about the, the actual particulars of the contract. Go with it here.
Time for discussion.
The contract said that he would get fifty thousand dollars. And, but his rate of pay right now says that he gets fifty-two thousand dollars. What does the city council say about that?
It's based on twenty or twenty-five dollars an hour times forty hours a week and stuff, right?
Right.
And.
Needs to be corrected to twenty-six.
Match the year. And then the hours, would, would it be forty hours?
It'd be thirty-two hours, which we previously discussed. And then did we also determine whether we were gonna use a.
That's a time clock.
A clock or a time, yeah, my brain is not working right now. A way to clock in, clock out for. Uh, that, that employee.
Should be a policy for all employees and once that policy is in place, then we should buy right.
Well, I mean, we don't know about that app, I mean, how, I mean, I don't know.
They're still working on.
We, I don't think it's applying to us.
I'm, I'm applying to them, but the, these guys all work out of their home and whatever, I mean, I don't know. That's why it's so critical when we hire somebody or, you know, nominate somebody to make sure that they do work. You know, so I, I don't. I think that's a.
I just don't see why it's not like some police departments, like they, when they're on shift, they're on the radio. This is, you know, I'm on duty in Martindale, whatever. Then the Caldwell County knows they're on duty, it's on record. Whenever they're out, I'm sure that's for other like emergency entities that also go on and, you know, like there's. Communication because in the city of, the Caldwell County knows, everybody knows. And I thought in cops scene, that's what they, whenever they're on duty or whatever, it marks that.
Cops scene, I think, might have that ability, but I don't know if it's ever been utilized as a matter of policy or.
So if, if it's a checking.
They have, they have three computers right now. And so there's a computer in each car and then the chief has a computer so that he can monitor. The activity of the other two officers.
Well, my question is, this is two officers here, I mean, it's totally different jobs, what do y'all think about that? Y'all are, y'all are involved, I mean, you're probably different.
The, I, I think a salary compensation that's set. Makes a lot of sense. It's, what's unique about that in this case is that it's not a full-time commitment. If there was a full-time commitment, I think that would make more sense. If, if we, if you want to do only thirty-two hours as the minimum commitment. I would cons. I'd advise city council to consider adjusting the salary amount accordingly. So that we could afford additional officers to pick up that other shift that could be missed. If the, if only the minimum is cheap. Now, the chief police to this point has exceeded that minimum routinely and frequently. But. It doesn't provide guarantees that that's gonna always be the case and it creates. Some budgeting scheduling unknowns that, that would.
But that will eventually be worked out.
Potentially, but, but, but my, my basic point is if we're. Under, under the current payment plan. Is roughly twenty-five dollars, I think there's like two cents per hour difference, roughly twenty-five dollars per hour. On a full-time basis, that equates roughly fifty-two thousand, which what the mayor mentioned. The contract proposal is fifty thousand, so it's two thousand dollars less. However, the work requirement's only for thirty-two hours and then. Easily exceed those, but if you look at the, if you applied the prior twenty-five dollar. Pay per hour payment compensation to only thirty-two dollars an hour, it'd be roughly forty-two. Pay per hour payment compensation to only thirty-two dollars an hour, it'd be roughly forty-two thousand dollars. And so there's, there's a gap there between about eight thousand dollars that. To, to pay for an additional shift.
That would not.
Buy a patrol.
That would, that would not be fair, because we advertise a job for fifty thousand, that's not fair.
We also advertise as a full-time position.
Well, technically, he's working full-time. Well, he's, he's working more than thirty-two hours.
But it's not, the term of the contract isn't.
But he, he is working thirty-two plus, and don't even think about his time at home, I don't even know what he does at home, so. I, I'm just saying, I'm insane.
I know that he's gone above thirty-two. From the beginning, there's been no issues on that one. I was just pointing out the, the differences and the different types of calculation versus hourly versus salary. And that amount of hours.
And then for clarification, whenever he was interim, was he hourly or was he salary? Okay, so then whenever he exceeded thirty-two hours, he's getting paid for those hours.
Correct.
He wasn't at a salary whenever he was interim, he was getting paid hourly.
Yeah.
Why did he want thirty-two hours in the contract?
Does any of the COVID money we got paid for any of the salaries of the police force that COVID money that? Cause I heard that.
So then we, we received, we received a, a couple, or two buckets of money that of COVID related funds that we received. The first was coronavirus relief fund, CRF, that fund did provide for salary expenses for. Law enforcement personnel in our case, emergency services, law enforcement. So our police department and personnel costs were able to be, um, reimbursed with those grant funds. However, that was only a one-time thing. We've since received another bucket of money under American Recovery Plan Act. There's a bunch of funds that shuffle out of that, but generally, the city has received three hundred thousand dollars. Between, split between two payments, half of it last year, half of this year, we have three hundred thousand dollars, that's just a one-time thing. So if we wanted to use part of that bucket of money to pay for anybody's salary, we could, um. It's just, we haven't developed that as a spend plan item.
One, one more point on Mike, we also gotta remember we are saving ten thousand dollars, because we're not paying benefits for the state. Cause he already has benefits, so the ten thousand dollars is already to be applied for additional officer. I'll have to, I'll say that, I said it in executive session, so.
Yeah.
That's what I'll, I'll, I'll make that point. So we're saving ten thousand.
So let's get, I guess get back to where your initial question. There is, was there anything that we needed to discuss about the contract? We still kind of juggling that right now, or?
Yeah. I would like for the contract to stay because he is not gonna receive benefits for it to stay that he's foregoing benefits. I don't think that it should be an option on the contract. I think that it says that, uh, along with this amount, there will not be any benefits. Uh, because, you know, it, it was his choice. Um, I think somehow that needs to be on there, because the way it is on a contract, it still seems like he can get benefits if you would like to do so.
He is getting partial, because he's getting retirement.
So he is getting benefits.
He's, he's foregoing the.
Uh-huh, so how much, uh, like, I, I mean, I, I wish I had, I knew how much it was.
Was it ten thousand, about seven, ten thousand?
A year?
Yeah, for health, did I need to have the health insurance? It was just like two months.
But the way that it's written, uh, right now, though, it's, it's still an option whether he wants it or not. So if he decided to get it, then that would be another seven to ten thousand dollars, the way that it's written currently.
That, that's correct.
Well, I think in a couple of years when he retires from the state.
Yes.
So I think basically.
Do we have to negotiate this contract every year?
You can, you can negotiate the, uh, the, the, the duties and the hours and the rate of pay at any point. Definitely, he's technically retired as chief of police and didn't see, I think, the rate of pay that he was receiving before. So it's just simply a matter of if you, if you have regular intervals, one of the value rate you look at.
Yeah, so I think ultimately, if it was advertised at fifty thousand dollars a, a year. I don't think we can go back on that. But did we advertise it as forty, forty-hour work week? Is that how we advertise this?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we do need to adjust that, that needs to be adjusted, in my opinion. Cause he's, he wants to work thirty-two hours versus the forty hours. I think that's only fair for us at the city. And for the.
Well, you take, so keep it at fifty thousand.
Uh, adjusted.
Work more than, so if he works, he works.
Well, I mean.
Then put it like a minimum.
So we need to ask him the question, are you gonna work thirty-two or are you gonna work forty? Cause we advertise at forty. Right, for fifty K, or he's like, okay, I want fifty K at thirty-two hours. That doesn't seem fair, right?
Uh, I, I, I would say approve the form of the contract tonight, uh, bring him in at the next meeting and. And have, have, have him have an open discussion on what the expectations are, and then make a. Cause I, I think a lot of these answers are in town from him.
Yeah.
Why do we have to, why do we have to approve the contract, and why can't we just?
Approve the form of the contract, simply plug in, uh. The hours, uh, the, the salary, and then the language on the benefit.
But then if we just table it, we could get all that done and.
Yes, I, except for there's a motion and a, a second on the floor, so we need to.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna, if you wanna correct your motion, we, we do a placement motion, we'll do that.
I, I have to retract, I retract the motion. To accept the contract.
It's basically retracted or amended.
I think we should wait and speak to him.
So you want to.
Okay, then you make a motion, since I retract it.
I make a motion to table the, the, the discussion about the chief of police, uh, contract. Until we get further clarification. From the chief.
For you.
Next city council meeting to be on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Um, how do you vote, yes?
Yes.
And your second is, and you made the motion? Okay, so the motion carries to table this until the next meeting. Okay, and then we're gonna go on to the wastewater planning update.
All right.
Session, we discussed six different development agreements, potential development agreements. They're not finalized yet.
No action.
And there was no action taken. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to.
I, I recommend that we, uh.
Table.
Table, item B, the TDS contract meeting. Uh, yes, B, Bravo Delta.
Okay, I make a motion that we, uh, table. Item C, B, discussion of possible action of Texas disposable, disposal system contract amendment to the ETJ requires service area.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay. And all those in favor, please say hi. So the motion carries.
Next.
You said C and B?
Well, it's cause it's how it's numbered, because we use double.
Oh.
Five, C, B. That is a funny number, and it should have been one.
We were just gonna table B, D, and E.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to five, C, C. Which is discussion impossible action on wastewater planning update.
All right, so, um, the, the quick update on that is. The city, um, I, I plan to, along with the economic development coordinator, zoning minister, Lisa Shaw. Uh, we plan to put out a sources sought notice, uh, regarding potential contracting opportunities with the city. For private utility service providers to provide wastewater services, um, to the city. And as far as that sources sought notice, we're gonna include, um, a couple requests for information. First thing, uh, a capability statement on what they provide, and then, um, questions regarding. Compensation or pricing, um, practices within that industry, that I understand with, with the markets. Um, based on that, we'll, we'll have a better understanding of who the players are in the market. And better inform our requests for proposals that would potentially go out with. Um, for a private utility provider for wastewater services. The goal is to create competition contracting to achieve better pricing, essentially. And then also obtain additional information from the industry, our, um, participants. And prevalent business practices so that we better understand what, what we need to do if we pursue down that, that path. So the, the goal was to have that source of salt notice published prior to this meeting, hopefully they'll go out here soon.
And, and news are going out to you.
We are one of, the sources of salt notice will be published on our city website, will go in on TML. And then we intend to contact, um, national industry, um, associations. Like the, there's like an American public utility, private utility conference or something, so we're, we're gonna go. Um, a lot of those national associations have local chapters, and my intent is to put it. Give it to those national organizations who have dues-paying members like Aqua Texas, BBRT, and whomever. Um, and they can inform their, their membership of potential opportunities. Um, I think we'll get a lot of interest, even if there's somebody who's in North Dakota right now doing that kind of work, they may want to expand into Texas.
Are you gonna contact BBRT?
Oh, yeah, they'll, they'll, the BBRT will, will hopefully, uh, participate in that source of salt notice.
And along with this discussion, I'll keep it short, uh, have you had any luck with, uh, market water supply?
That's a different subject.
No, it's, it's related.
Um, regarding wastewater.
No, water as a partner.
Um.
I think that, uh, that's, I think that, uh, Jan's right on that.
Yeah, so I, I, if you, if you have questions about, um, water supply, I can answer those. The, we have continued to engage in market research discussions with the locals. One of the local, uh, private utility companies, BBRT, who's pre- previously present to, to council. Um, we've had a number of conversations with them regarding their, um, business practices and such. The one item of interest is that they have been in contact with, um. Land developers within our ETJ and are advising them regarding municipal utility districts. And so our. My, my communication to these developers is that we prefer that they would, uh, not go with me to. Municipal utility district, instead, uh. Voluntarily annexed into the city, and we provide those wastewater services or, uh, finance, financing opportunities. Uh, to them through public improvement districts or, or some other alternative means to municipal utility district. So that was that, those discussions, um, are initially concerning, but we're gonna take steps to, to keep that dialogue. Open with them and, and run that around and see if there's, there's some way we can resolve that.
Okay.
Um, the other item that we are planning to do is on the advice of our engineer, but we talked. Previously about our wastewater capacity issues, and is to hire a financial advisor. There's a number of financial advisory, advising firms that advise municipalities, water districts, et cetera. On financial matters, so, um, I think it would be prudent for us to, to hire one of those companies. To advise the city on the best financial, um, considerations as we sit there. Public improvement districts, um, municipal utility districts, private-public partnerships, contract wholesale agreements, franchise agreements. All, you know, going bonding, leveraging Texas Water Development Board, uh, loans. And all the other options that are available, um, they'll build, provide sincerity and expertise. So we're, I'm working on a, um, request for proposals package. We're really watered down and simplified, but hopefully we'll, we'll listen to some good feedback, and then we'll. Bring it back to council for that, that contract, you know, evaluation and things. If we go down the path of a public improvement district, you, you have to have a financial advisor as part of the team that. That, that would participate in that, and so, um, if we decide to go that path, it will just be one step ahead. And then it can also advise us on that about.
And also a CC.
So update on the, on the, I, the concept of a regional, um, certificate of. Convenience and necessity, CCN, basically it creates a, a jurisdiction in which you control. The, um, service, the provision of wastewater services in our case. Uh, Water Supply Corporation, Water, Water, Water Supply Corporation, Maxwell Water Supply Corporation, Chrisup Clear. They all have their own CCNs for, uh, water, I think Chrisup Clear has a small one for wastewater. We, we've looked into, um, the benefits of having a CCN for wastewater. Uh, some nearby municipalities have those, um, and I. Reached out to them and spoke with some of their. City management team and. Got some insight from them on how that's worked out. One of the difficulties is that they found is. Even though they have a wastewater CCS, which does establish, um, certain leverage. To prevent misability districts and ensures that you have a regional approach to wastewater treatment or reuse. A SMURF representative mentioned today. However, that doesn't guarantee annexation. There's been cases of municipalities having a wastewater CCN and only achieving limited annexation. Much, very similar to what we achieved or agreed to with, uh, Walton Development. Twenty thirteen and then amended in twenty fourteen. So having a regional CCN would help. But it's not really a silver bullet that we thought it might be, and so, another thing that we, on that same line. Uh, public improvement districts, unless you're working with adjacent property owners, really becomes very, very difficult. And so, um, as we're looking at public improvement districts to provide wastewater services. In our ETJ under development agreements. If, unless there are. Connected prop, you know, shared property lines between property owners. You almost are gonna end up with a pocket pit kind of concept where you have a pit over here, you have a pit over here. But there are areas, based on some of the inquiries we've received, um, near our. West Ridge area of town where there's almost a crescent of development activities. Around that area that are contiguous to one another, where there's a potential. Um, to create a single pit to service those develop, a single pit to service those developments. Um, and our waste, our current wastewater system is smack in the middle of that, so that, that might be an option. Um, and our waste, our current wastewater system is smack in the middle of that. So that, that might be an option, um, but. We have to get, get all the developers in, in the room at some point to, to, to agree to it. And, and that's going to be kind of tough because they're all, they're all competitors in some way, right? So, um. But I think if, if you package it right, I can just smartly and say, listen, this by pooling resources. Achieve some better kinds of scale, use cost for everybody. Then the hard parts want to be, you know, how projects phased out, so start different things, um. But I think there's some, some potential there. I haven't given up on that thought. But worst case is. The city owns public improvement districts, package plants. Around town, um, instead of having mugs around town. So that's, that's an alternative.
It's probably our best.
I, I feel, I still think that a private contract is still a viable solution, um. Franchise agreement could be.
Work on first.
No, I'm working on all of it at the same time.
Yeah.
Um, Lisa and I are, are keeping real busy, um. So. At, when we're talking with developers who are interested in wastewater services, we let them know that the city is considering at least two options. Um, there may be more on the table, but we are open to providing those services or provide a way needs to get those services in place. So. It, it may end up where it's not one size fits all, uh, where different developments. Suit themselves in different types of application.
You just have to wait to get in there and see what everything.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to get, roll our sleeves up.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting is.
Get in the sludge.
Get in the sludge a little bit. Uh, what's really interesting is if you look at our ETJ maps, there are large tracts of land. So when you think of landowners, you know, there's, there's not very many landowners, property owners. Um, because of these, all these big tracts, it covers a large area. So there, there's. There's a way that you can connect, potentially connect them all. Um, with only a couple little hoops in between and maybe you could come up with a master pit kind of thing. But. Yeah, that would, that would inquire. Everybody jumping with both feet at the same time and that might be a little difficult to manage. So. That's, that's what's going on. So a couple of contract actions that were, were contracting type of activity, sources sought notice for. Um, private utilities, want to cut out with a request for proposals for a, uh, financial advisor. Our engineer is still engaged and we're engaged with development, like developers on all different options.
So just, if, if you don't mind, send us a notice or a link in a notice or whatever that you're gonna send out to. Search for.
Yeah.
Potential.
Yeah. We'll do that. That's, that's the update.
Okay, that'd be a great start.
Yeah, no kidding.
Keep us in the loop.
No kidding. If we thought, if we thought the exact session was long. Yeah. Lisa, I have a day.
All right, that's, that's it. Is that, that's it?
That's, that's all you have.
That's all you have.
You're tapping.
If we would like to table the last two items, I would need a motion.
I make a motion that we table the last two items.
I don't remember what.
Um, they are going to be, well, it's gonna be D, discussion, possible action of the bicycle rodeo event. Um. And then also the discussion, uh, possible action for McCloud River Protection, uh, to ratify the protection ordinance.
I'm second.
Till the next city council meeting.
And Jan seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we're motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Well, do we know what we're gonna do next future items?
We got it now. Yeah, I'm just gonna act, all right, we're here. Hold on, guys. Any luck on that?
Yeah.
Can we get the vote? We got the second, we get the vote. Aye. We got Lisa, there we go.
I don't think I did.
So you agree, right?
Yeah, votes in the second and the concurrent.
All in favor.
Three.
Hi, favorite to adjourn. Hi.
Aye. Yeah.